Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, January 28th, 2025, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. School committees and other public bodies may continue to hold remote meetings through March 31st, 2025, under legislation enacted on March 29th, 2023. The statute, Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, extends quorum reductions for remote meetings. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded and aired live by LCTV. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll begin with correspondence. Jamie?
Yep. Emails from the following people regarding the Long Meadow High School hockey teams. Mr. Kevin Watney, 1-7 of 2025. Mr. John Rasio, 1-7 of 2025. Mr. Jeff Sullivan, 1-8 of 2025. That's a typo on there. Yep. So, Mr. Michael Sutherland, 1-8, 2025. Mr. Rafael Hernandez, 1-9 of 2025. Mrs. Kara Downey, 1-10 of 2025.
All right. Great. Thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes, we have a possible recommended motion.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to January 14th, 2025, school committee meeting as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Jamie?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Estelle?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Thank you. Public speak. We have a moment if there are any members of the public who would like to come forward and speak. I don't see anyone online. I don't see anyone here, so I guess we're good. We're moving into business with guests, and we're going to go slightly out of order and start with the presentation of the FY26 school budget. We'll turn that over to you guys.
All right. Thank you so much. What's that?
Just making sure that copies of the presentation.
Oh, gotcha. All right. Share my screen here and get us rolling. Full screen. All right.
I just want to make sure I can see folks.
Yeah. I have to go.
Have a hand raised at some point.
Let's see. We have to get out of full screen then.
Sorry.
All right. The technology's set. Appreciate the opportunity to share with the school committee and the community an administrative recommendation for the FY26 budget and assembled today as the entire administrative team, so appreciate their attendance tonight. This budget is a reflection of our shared priorities. Mr. Mazza and I had an opportunity to meet with each of the administrators to kind of understand what the opportunities and challenges are in terms of the upcoming budget, and so we appreciated their input throughout. So, we come to you tonight as a team and come to you prepared to answer any questions that you might have relative to the FY26 budget. To begin, I want to extend thanks to Tom Mazza, our Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, for his diligent preparation of the FY26 budget documents. Tom has a masterful handle on the budget, and he's worked closely with finance sub, he's worked closely with the town manager's office to understand the fiscal context for the presentation tonight. So, while I get to provide the overview, Tom has furnished you with all the detailed budget documents in your meeting packet. This is another step. I'm sorry.
You've got something waiting to comment to.
Oh, sorry about that. There we go. So, we have, this is another milestone for us in the development of the FY26 budget. It actually started back in November when we began conversations with the town, and the school committee had an opportunity to have a joint budget meeting with the select board so that I think both parties sort of understood what the challenges were as we looked at the 25, 26 school year. So, you'll see the milestones depicted on this slide tonight, January 28th, the initial budget recommendation. The school committee will host a public hearing on February 4th, and if we're in a position to do so, we would seek a school committee vote on February 11th. So, we have some time to gather school committee feedback tonight, make adjustments to the presentation, gather additional information, or frankly, make adjustments to the recommendation. So, that kicks off the town's involvement with our budget. We would present the budget potentially to the select board on March 3rd, and then from there, the town manager works with the select board to arrive at a budget that would be considered at the annual town meeting on May 13th. The budget is very much driven by our strategic goals and the investments that we're able to make and even some of the investments that we wish we could make are tied to the goals that are depicted on this slide. And I was thinking about this slide earlier today, and it occurred to me that so many of the objectives here are objectives that really are recent in the history of public education. And, you know, these are a reflection of the complexity of the work of our administrators and our teachers and the entire staff. It's a reflection of trying to ensure that we're addressing the needs of the whole child. So, at a very high level, the most high-level slide that we can offer you tonight, and we can come back to this later on, is the FY26 budget recommendation. You'll note that it recommends an increased contribution from the town's general fund by $1.287 million over FY25. So, the general fund contribution that would be associated with this recommendation is It also reflects revenue from special revenues, grants, whether they're regular education grants or special education grants or other competitive grants. This budget would be supplemented by $3.377 million in special revenue for a total FY26 budget recommendation of $44,852,879. So, to back up a little bit and begin with a bit of an explanation of the building blocks of a school budget, I think it's important to understand the building blocks to really appreciate the full context and really some of the systemic challenges, the fiscal challenges that we face in putting together a budget for FY26. So, essentially, a school budget is made up of Chapter 78. That's the state's main source of public funding, of public education. The state defines each community's minimum local contribution. It's essentially based on a community's ability to pay. Those two factors taken together represent required net school spending. It's what the state essentially says is the minimum amount that communities need to spend to provide, to create an adequate public education. Above and beyond that are contributions that the town makes above what is minimally required. And additionally, we receive grants and we have other sources of revenue that we use to fund education here in Long Meadow. And so, that required net school spending for the purposes of our discussion tonight, it really represents the foundation budget. It's, again, it's the budget that the state would say is minimally required to provide an adequate public education. Above and beyond that are contributions that the town makes above what is minimally required. And additionally, we receive grants and we have other sources of revenue that we use to fund education here in Long Meadow. And so, that required net school spending for the purposes of our discussion tonight, it really represents the foundation budget. It's, again, it's the budget that the state would say is minimally required to provide an adequate public education to students in the Commonwealth. And these calculations are made up by first determining the foundation budget, a complex formula that I can share a spreadsheet depicting, showing enrollment, programming, the demographic characteristics of students, and from that calculation, a foundation budget is derived for each school district in the Commonwealth. And then from there, each town is assigned a minimum local contribution, essentially, again, based on the town's ability to pay, local income, property taxes, essentially the relative wealth of each municipality, and from that, state aid is calculated. And so, that required local contribution plus Chapter 78 represents a district's net school spending requirement. And if you really want to get wonky and dive into the details of the foundation budget, this is a document that is very much available to the public. I wouldn't expect the community or the committee to see the details here, but essentially what the foundation budget calculation does is it identifies an enrollment across grade levels. It identifies students who require specialized support in the form of special education or English language learner programs or vocational instruction. It also identifies a number of students who are designated as low-income by the state. And so, in each of those categories, there's an allocation that is set aside to establish that foundation budget. So, I just want to point out a couple of things here that drive the calculation of this foundation budget. And so, one is up in the top right corner here is, you'll see the low-income number. The state has determined that there are 403 of our students who are defined as coming from low-income families. And I point that out because that's a number that we have seen increase in recent years. And I can show you where we were going back 10 years, but that number drives up the foundation budget, and generally, students in these categories require additional support. And so, the foundation budget for FY26 is $35,588,989. And so, again, that is the amount that the state would say is minimally required to educate students here in Long Meadow. Of course, the town's contributions go well beyond that, but for our purposes, it will help sort of set a baseline for the challenges that we face fiscally. So, this is a depiction of the selected populations I mentioned a moment ago. You'll see that in 2014, 2015, there were 5.9% of our students were identified as economically disadvantaged. In 22, 23, and this is information that was pulled from the Department of Education's public site, 11.7% of our students were designated as coming from low-income families. And so, these are factors that drive the necessary supports that are needed in our schools, but it also drives the creation of that foundation budget. So, our history with the foundation budget, excuse me, you'll see that as that calculation has changed and as the state has defined what an adequate minimum foundation budget is, it's increased significantly. So, from FY25 to FY26, the state would say that foundationally, we would need an additional $1.3 million. And that's just the foundation budget that we generally go beyond. And so, tie that back now to Chapter 78. This is the source of aid that drives public education in Massachusetts. The governor just released the House One budget a couple of weeks ago, and you'll see that our Chapter 78 increase is only $204,675. So, that represents the minimum amount that we could receive under the state's funding formula this year. We are a hold harmless district, subject by the governor's budget to receive $75 per student. So, I guess I would encourage everyone to compare that increase in Chapter 78 to the increase that we saw represented here on the foundation budget. And to put those two numbers together, you'll see that based on the current projections, based on the current, the governor's budget, Chapter 78 would increase by 2.77%. The foundation budget would increase by 4%, putting pressure on Long Meadow to fund the difference. And again, we go beyond the minimum local requirements. We go beyond the foundation budget here in Long Meadow, as do most other communities, but it's a good benchmark, it's a good reference point to basically tell us, show us that the cost of doing business in public education has increased significantly. The foundation budget is a reflection of that shared consensus that it costs more to educate children nowadays, given the complexity of our work, given the demands, given the needs of students in 2025. So, I guess I would present this to the committee and the community as a systemic challenge that we face, that as costs rise, as the complexity of our work increases, it makes me wonder if Chapter 78 is in fact mirroring that. And, you know, I think across the Commonwealth, communities are feeling the burden of rising costs and flat state aid. We are, of the 350-some-odd communities, districts in Massachusetts, we're one of 200 or so, I can get the exact numbers, who are scheduled to receive the minimum amount in state aid, the $75 per student. So, it really presents, you know, some challenges for us as we develop a budget that is reflective of our needs and hopes here in Long Meadow. Another way of looking at it is that increasing gap between the foundation budget and Chapter 78. Chapter 78, to the credit of the state, has increased in recent years, but I would say, again, the foundation budget, AKA, the cost of doing business, has increased at a greater rate, and so, it ultimately puts pressure on local communities like Long Meadow to catch up and to keep pace. So, I wanted to present that as just sort of the wider context for the budget recommendation that we have for you tonight. So, to get into some of the local details, this is a slide that depicts the various sources of revenue that drive the Long Meadow Public Schools budget. You'll see that we are largely dependent on the general fund, we're largely dependent on the residents, the taxpayers of Long Meadow. 92.5% of our budget is attributed, comes from the general fund. Circuit breaker is a state, source of state aid that helps offset special education placements that really go beyond a local community's ability to afford. Metco, we're anticipating a slight increase, a slight increase in the amount of school choice revenue that we can apply to the budget. You'll see that regular education grants, actually, I'm not sure if I updated this slide here, Tom, is that the updated version? I'll have to pull that. So, can you speak to that, where we are with that line, Tom?
Yeah, the regular ed grants, we're anticipating about a $29,000 or so increase, hoping for a $29,000 or so net increase in our regular ed grants. I think specifically, we're looking at Title I based on some preliminary information. If you recall, last year, we were talking about possible reduction in Title I support services because the state had kind of given us a notice that we'd be receiving less funding. Now, they're telling us that there's a bit of a jump in the number of eligible students, so, although they haven't put a dollar amount to it yet, but we're hoping that we'll be able to at least maintain staffing and services to the level we have in FY25.
Thank you.
Some history here on where we've been with the general fund increases over the years. You'll see that this request this evening would represent a 3.2% general fund increase. It sort of falls in line with recent requests. It goes below where we were in FY25. And so, I think that 3% increase, again, I would tie it back to, I'll jump back to this slide, where we see that the state has said that foundationally, the budgets would tie back to a 4% increase. So, it creates a strain and it creates a gap for us when, at the state level, they're recognizing that the cost of doing business has increased, but tying it back to, you know, the fiscal position of the town puts us in a challenging spot. So, the historical general funding increases, and you'll see how that, also how it ties back to the total budget increase when all funds are considered and accounted for. So, the budget that we are bringing to you this evening is essentially a level service budget. It maintains existing staffing, it maintains existing services and existing programs. The adjustments that I'll share with you now really relate to some of the changing needs of students. So, I guess I can confidently say at this stage that the budget would allow us to maintain our existing level of service. So, I'll start with some of the reductions on the left-hand side. Attrition refers to retirement. We're anticipating a small number of retirees, and generally, we're able to hire lower on the pay scale as employees move on to retirement. We are anticipating a reduction in kindergarten enrollment, and so, that would allow for the reduction of one section at the kindergarten level. Currently, we have 10 sections at the kindergarten level. We're projecting that we will only need nine, and that would still allow us to create favorable class size. So, that reduction is enrollment-related, and it shouldn't be seen as a reduction in service. There are two positions tied to that section reduction, one being the classroom teacher, the other being the classroom assistant. Special education transition support, we have built up a great partnership with institutions of higher education, and they have been providing some critical transition support for Long Meadow students. And next year, we had assigned personnel to that function in the past. Next year, that work will be able to be taken on by the institution, so that is a favorable development for us. The teacher of the deaf services, again, the needs of students requiring these services has changed, and so, we're able to realize that savings without a reduction in service to any child. And then, some miscellaneous supplies and services tied to the grants that Tom described earlier. On the other side of the ledger are some additions and increases that we must anticipate. The biggest number there is contractual obligations. We need to make sure that we meet our projected obligations tied to collective bargaining agreements and that we're in a position to, you know, continue to attract and retain the finest educators and administrators and staff around. So, that number is a reflection of meeting those obligations and ensuring that we're well-positioned in terms of staffing next year. Transportation, we have seen increases, we received news of increases from the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. This is the collaborative that we belong to that provides our transportation services, but transportation services for regular education students, special education students, students who take the bus over to Career Tech, the vocational program, and even students who access busing tied to our Metco program. In each of those areas, we have to project, plan for increases tied to transportation. Out-of-district tuitions, we're anticipating an increase to ensure that we're serving the individual needs of students whose needs cannot be met here in Long Meadow. Vocational tuitions, this relates to children attending Career Tech. The cost of those tuitions has increased, and additionally, we have students that access a Career Tech program, a tech ed program outside of the LPVEC that we have to account for as well. Some reductions associated with computer software and services on both the town and the school side. Paraprofessional requests came from our administrative team that we feel we have to honor. Utilities, we're in a better position with utilities than we were last year. You'll recall that that was a variable number last year that we were trying to incorporate and plan for, but utilities, a more modest increase in FY26. So, all in, all out, we're looking at a total increase of $1.428 million, and we're happy to talk through the implications of any of those lines with you. Just to, one of the data points that the school committee and even the select board has asked for in the past is to sort of provide some information on staffing, and you'll see here that really this proposes almost an even amount of staffing, the staffing levels where we are right now compared to what we're projecting for FY26. It's a nearly identical level of staffing. We had added some positions once the budget was set, once the FY25 budget was set, but with the additions and increases that we discussed, current staffing, next year's staffing will match our current staffing levels. Projected elementary class size under this recommendation, I think, again, it positions us well. Long Meadow has long had a commitment to really manageable, reasonable class size numbers, and so, we're pleased that we're able to bring you a recommendation that creates some favorable class size at the elementary level. And if you have any, if you want us to come back to this when we get to questions, we certainly can. At the middle level, similarly, these are much more of a projection than what I had shown you at the elementary level. The numbers never precisely break down the way they're depicted here. These are, these would be averages across all the sections. There is some variability at the 7th and 8th grade because, based on the math that students choose or the word language that students choose. So, those are averages that we're anticipating at Glenn Brook and Williams. High school enrollment will be steady next year based on the number of students that are graduating and the number of students that will be joining the high school next year. In recent years, we've seen a drop-off in enrollment at the high school, and it's allowed for some staffing adjustments. We're not anticipating that next year. We're anticipating that high school enrollment will be more or less consistent when compared to this year. So, that's our, this is our current enrollment projection. I guess we'll wrap it up, and this is where the slide, I think, certainly reflects some of the conversations that we've had with our administrative team. This budget is not finalized. This budget is a recommendation even after the school committee votes the budget. Some of the variables on the right... Some of the variables on the right are unknown and become clearer. So on the left-hand side, there are some areas where there could be room for potential investment. Were we in a position? I think at the top of the list is investments in the continuum of behavioral supports that are articulated in our MTSS framework. I'd say each administrator we spoke with talked about the need to provide critical behavioral supports to our students, mental health supports, SEL supports. We continue to be interested in making investments on that side of the MTSS triangle. In the past, we've talked about this as student support centers. We've had some success with the creation of student support centers at some of our schools and it, it appears to be a model that we could replicate in all schools if we had the opportunity. Other areas for potential investment include substitute teaching, probably at a point where we need to continue to evaluate the substitute teacher rates to be sure that we are attracting and retaining qualified substitutes for our educators when they need to be out. Fully funding athletics, this has been a conversation that has been held at finance subcommittee to think about how this budget could, how a budget could fully fund athletics in a manner that might take the pressure off of parents in terms of the fees that they're, that they're required to pay for their children to participate in sports. Supplies, I want, I want to mention that this budget, it really assumes level funding in, in a lot of key supply areas. And we all know that, you know, with inflation, costs continue to rise. So when, when supplies are level funded, it really, for supplies, it would have the effect of, of reducing what we can secure and acquire for our classrooms. So again, this budget assumes level funding for supplies. Support staff, ensuring that we have appropriate support staff in terms of paraprofessionals, clerical staff, technical, technology staff. You know, these are the people that work so closely with educators and administrators to make it all work for kids and for teachers. And so we know that there's some areas that we would like to invest in if we had that opportunity. Instructional coaching, regular and special education. Our administrators that are with us tonight, they're a busy group and I know that, you know, we feel collectively that we could achieve even greater results if we had even a stronger, more robust commitment in terms of instructional coaching. It's, it's that layer of, of leadership below the principles that is really working side-by-side with teachers to support instruction and support planning. Fully funding curriculum renewal and adoption. We're eager to ensure that we are, we have an articulated curriculum plan. Dr. Nelson has done a really nice job of laying out our current and future needs in terms of curriculum renewal, replacement and adoption. But truth is that, you know, this budget and past budgets have not fully funded those renewal plans. And I know that's something that, that the school committee has made some critical investments in and I know the committee would share our interest in, in, in funding that to a, on a more regular, consistent basis. Full-day preschool. So I think we've begun to hear from parents in the community that they would benefit from full-day preschool. Right now, we have six half-day sections at the preschool level. What we would be interested in is, is creating a full-day section at the preschool level. And, you know, it, right now, you know, the students who attend our preschool, it's, it's a very short day and it creates some childcare challenges for our families. They have increasingly been inquiring about the possibility of a full-day section of preschool. And then finally, this last bullet, in-district special education programming, maybe it belongs on the other side of the ledger here, but we always want to explore opportunities to create in-district special education programming for our neediest students. That's good for kids and it's good for budgets if we're able to do that. And so we need to be nimble, we need to be responsive, we need to be able to create those programs to ensure that kids get to attend school in their hometown. The variables, the, these are, these are unknowns and they, and many of them will not be known for weeks, months, perhaps even into the summer. The town's fiscal position, we still need to be sensitive to the, to the fiscal context here in Long Meadow. We want to put forth a budget that is, is manageable, it's reasonable, it's efficient, it's responsible. And so it's important that we continue to stay in touch with the town manager's office and the select board and really understand what the town's position is and what they can support, what that, in terms of our ask. Collective bargaining agreements, we're actively working with our partners in the LEA to reach agreements that, again, help us attract and retain great people. Final state aid levels won't be known for months. It will probably be into July when we really know what the, the final state aid levels are. I'd add a bullet up there that, you know, probably would be hot off the presses, federal aid levels. Lots of conversation even today about what federal aid will look like. We're still trying to understand that here in the administrative offices. Kindergarten class size, we think with nine sections, we think the projection will hold, but we've seen in the past, we've seen enrollment surprises that we have to be responsive to. Utilities, final, the final projections for utilities, again, we feel like that's not as variable as it had been in the past, but worth noting. Long Meadow high class signups, fee-based services, busing, preschool, athletics, all of those provide revenue that fuel the budget. And so we want to make sure that we're responsive and planful with those fee-based services. Spring and summer enrollment, again, we have to watch the patterns between now and September to ensure that we're creating manageable class size if there are some registrations between now and September. And then also planning for final school choice and Metco participation numbers. So this is our initial recommendation. You can see that there are some unknowns still. You can see that there's a, a long budget road still in front of us and we're happy to answer any questions you might have, take any feedback, make any adjustments, bring back any additional information that would be helpful. And our admin team is, is here as well if, if you have any questions of them. So appreciate the chance to bring you the recommendation.
All right. Thank you to Dr. Shea and Mr. Mazza and all of our administrators. I know this has been a lot to look at over the last several weeks and we appreciate the time and energy that went into it. I know we're early on in the process and there's still some potential for changeability, but I'll open to questions and/or discussion from anyone either here in the room or at home.
Julie.
Well, Marty, can I, I just wanted to ask, you mentioned this a little bit on your last slide, but in last year, we saw like a pretty significant difference, right, between the governor's proposal for chapter 70 and then what actually landed. Can you just talk about how we accommodate those changes as we move forward on the budget process?
Yeah, thank you. Great question. Last year, this time, we were projecting a $30 per student increase and so it was going to be somewhere around $80, something thousand dollars, a really modest, modest is generous, a really skimpy increase in chapter 78. And then ultimately, as you pointed out, Julie, it turned out to be over $100 per student, $110, I think, per student. And so at that point, we, I'm trying to recall, Tom, if you can help me out, whether the budget requires to be revoted or it's simply some adjustments that we can make.
Yeah, I mean, because that, that aid number really didn't get finalized until the budget was adopted, which was late spring, early summer, I think it was July, actually, before it was finalized. The additional revenue wasn't incorporated until the fall town meeting when there was amendment to the budget that town meeting approved and subsequently, school committee approved some changes to the general fund budget back in the fall, incorporating $125,000 additional dollars into the FY '25 budget. So it's really dependent upon the timing, Julie, as to whether or not it can get incorporated into the projected budget we submit and what the town submits to the select board.
So does a change like that, you know, I don't know what we'll see this year and I know the governor's budget is a little different this time around than it was last year, but like, um, would that, would a change like that allow us to have the flexibility if we see like kindergarten enrollment and higher than what we expected or some of the, some of the places where we had to make adjustments?
It's an option, assuming that there's some consensus about how that additional funding will be used, whether it's going to come to the school department or reside with the town. I think the net amount of increase was $250,000 and $125 was added to the school budget and $125 went to the DPW budget, was my best recollection. So again, I mean, there's a lot of variables. It's not uncommon that the final aid numbers from the state are different than what is projected in the budget that gets adopted along with even local receipts. Usually that is then part of the fall town meeting, put funding that's moved into the operational stabilization account or part, part of free cash and then appropriated for projects through town meeting.
Does that answer everything, Julie?
Yeah.
All right. Other questions or thoughts? Wonder, oh, Jamie, yep.
Yeah, one question, just on slide 23 there. So full-day preschool?
Yeah.
Is there a, like, is there a cost associated with this or is this just an additional service that they would pay for a full day?
So if, right now, we run six half-day sections. If you, if you, if it resulted in five sections where one of them is full day and the other four remain half-day?
Okay.
Then it wouldn't necessarily change your costs. But the question is whether or not if we ran a full-day section, if it would increase need or registrations, enrollment, that kind of thing. So any additional context?
Yeah, we might also consider what that fee is for a full-day program versus the current structure with his, which is a half-day program. So we would want to look at that. I think to Marty's point, if enrollment exceeds the number of seats available in those five sections, are we then looking at a requirement to add another half-day? So that's where you would see that in those incurred costs that weren't planned for, potentially. Again, in '25, our preschool enrollment, I think, is down by seven, six or so from, from the previous year. It's probably the first time that's happened and we've been seeing a bit of a steady increase in preschool enrollment. I know Nicole, Paris, Corona have talked and most certainly is a high interest in full-day slots. But one, we're, we're really tight on space at Wolf Swamp. Second, obviously, is the financial commitment to being able to support the program.
Got it. And I guess the only other thing on these particular, this list here, obviously, they're all a bit concerning, but the two I would kind of want to see and kind of just vet out because it doesn't look like there's a ton of changes from the overall budget's kind of status quo. Is if we fully funded the curriculum, what does that look like? You do that, what are you changing in your budget? You obviously have to reduce somewhere to make that work. I would love to see kind of what, because we're choosing something and I don't even know what we're choosing. Would I do fully fund this or would I do something else? What is that, something else for that? And then for, you know, it doesn't sound like the preschool might not be a huge hurdle. I mean, depending on how it shakes out, obviously, you're taking a chance. And then the athletics funding too, I would want to know, what am I choosing right now over, over doing those, especially the curriculum? I mean.
So with curriculum, you're kind of heading right into the exact question I was going to ask next, which is, I don't see any sort of big moves in this budget right now and I know that we're kind of in the process of scheduling a new curriculum sub and, and I was just curious where we sort of are at this point. Is there anything that's coming up in FY '26 or are we sort of in pre-planning mode for FY '27?
As Beth's gets settled, I, my first quick reaction is, and I would want everyone to know, that there's no major adoption that we're pushing off or delaying as a, as a result of this budget, but.
Regular upkeep, I'm, I'm assuming is obviously already incorporated, but.
Sure. So there's regular upkeep, digital subscriptions right now to maintain textbooks are hovering between 70 to like 78,000 a year, depending on when those subscriptions come up. We have many that were on multi-year subscriptions that we were able to do during some COVID era, ESA funding, ESR funding. And so just trying to get a hold on all of that, but it's between 70 to 78 over the next couple of years that I'm predicting, that I'm estimating we'll be running for. And then to maintain the CKLA and the bridges, we have already money allocated for those annual expenses. So to main, to do it, it's, we do have a curriculum review cycle now, so we need more time to see, you know, for, are there going to be other large curriculum adoptions? We don't see that in the next two or three years right now with what we have. The elementary math seems very happy with bridges, so when that curriculum review cycle comes up for bridges, which would be in the 27, 20, 26, 27, 28 school year, there's a newer addition of bridges out now. We wouldn't be doing a full adoption. We might be looking just to enhance what we have to complement that newer addition, which right now, pricing is about $30,000. So in about three years, like, my brain is thinking, maybe we need to think about $30,000 just to have the latest addition of our math elementary curriculum. I know several years ago, middle school math came, that doesn't seem to be as urgent right now. They seem to be very happy with what they do have. The standards haven't changed and we haven't seen those new reports from Ed Reports and Curate, which was what the holdup was several years ago. So there's not an urgent need to replace that curriculum at, in, in the present moment.
Okay.
And I'd add, you know, I think Beth has shared with me that, you know, certainly there are requests for curriculum supplies or software that come to us regularly that, you know, sometimes we're not able to honor because of the, the funds that are available to us. But I guess those types of things would be potentially, we'd be in a better position to meet those requests if we were, if we had the fully funded curriculum renewal and adoption plan. But I, I want to credit this school committee for increasing the commitment to this line item in recent years. I mean, we, you have certainly stepped up the allocation towards regular curriculum renewal and adoption. And so I think it's just, this is an ongoing need that we want to continue to address and we appreciate the chance to even talk about it.
Yeah, we appreciate the work you've put into kind of developing a, a renewal cycle that gives us a little bit of time to project. Is either of you able to just, for anybody who might be listening, talk a little bit maybe about somehow, sometimes the challenges that might be associated with a full adoption? Because I know there are some sticky points when it comes to like, we can't say, okay, this is going to cost $800,000, so we'll put aside $200 this year, $200 next year, sort of work our way towards it. You want to address how that can sometimes be a little bit trickier to plan fully for?
I mean, ideally, the curriculum adoption cycle would happen where it's almost a year and a half in advance of the actual purchase, where when we're developing the budget that will take effect on a July 1st, we know at least a year and a half ahead of what that
that cost will be. I mean, when we look at what previous adoptions, the range of the adoptions could have cost, I mean, it was anywhere from eight hundred thousand to two fifty for the elementary, um, ELA adoption, so. And to the point of we, we don't have a mechanism, municipalities, school districts don't have the ability to kind of set money aside in a savings account and build it up towards, to reach a threshold or a dollar amount for a potential purchase. It would either be through the line item within the budget, an appropriation from the town, which is what happened in FY twenty-five, um, or, you know, some other means. We were fortunate the state had some funding attached to the bridges adoption, so the cost there was not as high as it could have been. We weren't as fortunate with the CKLA adoption, so I don't know if that answers your question.
No, that does, and that, it also speaks well to how important that, um, renewal cycle and planning is, so just again, appreciation for the work that's gone into that for planning to make it easier for budget times.
One of the things, like, if you're piloting or you're field testing a, a curriculum, and you complete that field test or that pilot in May, let's say, that's the point where you figure out what the costs, the associated costs would be of an adoption, but it's after your budget has already been voted, and so that's where, you know, Tom's talking about that year and a half, it, it does require that long-term planning, so.
Yeah.
I do agree, I think we're in a, you know, we're well-positioned right now to kinda have an idea of what's around the bend curriculum-wise. And again, we're, we're, appreciate the conversation, but there's no adoption that's being delayed as a result of this budget. We feel like, you know, we're able to maintain our, you know, commitment to CKLA, bridges, and other, other key curriculum areas, so.
Wonderful. Thank you, appreciate it. Other questions? Yeah?
Yeah, so just, so just, no, it's perfect, um, so, so we don't, we feel like we're budgeted well enough in that, in that particular line item. I would just say that on these other ones, um, I wouldn't mind just looking at kinda what the spend is. Like, the first one, sounds like a good idea to me, how much are we talking about? We're talking fifty grand? So I'm gonna spend fifty grand there, what am I gonna get rid of for fifty grand? And just so I can see what I'm choosing. I don't like not knowing what I'm choosing, so on these, I think these are all really good ideas, some of them are pretty small kinda spends, I would assume, supplies, I mean, how much, I, I don't know how much that could be. But just to know, I mean, some of these are pretty big spends, I would assume the athletics ones is at least quarter million dollars, you know?
Fully funding it, something like that, right?
So you, that would be a big change in the other budget, but I wouldn't mind seeing, 'cause some of these look, I would say, even in instructional coaching, and then kinda just look at it and kinda go, just so we know what we're choosing. We may leave this completely as it is, 'cause it looks like a pretty darn good budget, from what you've did. And I just like, some of these are pretty, especially the preschool one, that seems like a really good investment. I mean, my opinion, but I wonder how much it costs, like, an idea, I mean, you have to have the gas, so at least if we know if we're gonna throw fifty grand at that, what are we gonna get rid of for fifty grand? Or take a chance with utilities and under budget or something like that? So, um, that would just be my thing, is just if there's ones on here, which ones would you really say would be a big bang for our buck?
Yeah, the, the, the list, I'm glad you asked that question, it, it really is in no particular order, but I would highlight the first bullet on the left, I would highlight our interest in ensuring that we're meeting, you know, the, uh, social emotional needs of students, their behavioral needs, uh, their mental health needs, that, that seems to, uh, be a, that was probably the, um, most frequently heard feedback that we heard from our administrative team when we, we did our budget rounds.
That would be one of my, like, the first one, the last one, kinda going, I mean, but how much, like, what are we talking, if we're talking five grand, then that's one thing, if it's fifty or a hundred, at least, I mean, I would be in support of a lot of that stuff up there and kinda, I just wanted to know.
To, to really create a, like, a student support center at each school, you're really talking.
Which schools do we have that at right now?
Right now, we have it at Wolf Swamp and Glenbrook.
Okay.
And, um, and the other schools sorta are doing their best with existing staff to try and create those, kinda a, a mirror of those supports that exist at Glenbrook and Wolf Swamp.
And I know a few years ago, um, Principal Allen, you were looking to, um, build a stronger student support center, do you feel like that's kind of in the place you'd like it to be now? Is that sort of the model of what we'd be looking to recreate in other buildings?
So I'd say that I think we're still building on that, what we have done this year, though, is able, we didn't know what we were gonna have for Title I funds this year, to be able to have a person in there, so the whole time we were planning it, it was to have that fully supervised. So the, the teacher that's in there right now is working with kids that are assigned to him, um, you know, through MTSS, um, the process, but we also have an option where if kids need a break, or they, you know, they go in there, they sign in, they grab a timer, they put it off for five minutes, we have different ways that they could take a break, and then they end up going back to class, so it's, it, it's a great place for drop-ins as well, and we also wanna start, we also wanted to start to use it with our guidance department, um, for what they need, because what we have set up in our buildings right now, the suite that we have in guidance, is not really conducive to getting some of those kids, so we have a lot of the kids that are in there on bike desks, so they're biking while they're on a desk, there's a lot of stand-up desks, there's a lot of fidget toys, there's different furniture, so kids really have a lot of opportunities in there to be in different spaces, and there are a lot of kids that do just need a break, uh, they go for a walk, or if they wanna go in there for a minute, but they do log in, they're tracked, there's a timer, and stuff like that, too.
And the, and worth mentioning, and Nicole's comments reminded me of this, that, um, the reason that those exist at Wolf Swamp and Glenbrook is because of the Title I funding that, that, um, supports those programs.
And had we not had that funding, then it wouldn't be, we'd have all this stuff that we had ordered and had for a room, but we'd have nobody to kind of be in there to run it, in a way, yeah. So we are finding it beneficial, we're finding a higher need for, for more students to be able to utilize that space as well, so.
And do other schools have any kind of component that they feel is particularly, I'm guessing that we're also similar situation with staffing, um, from Principal Matias?
Yeah. We are slightly different than what Glenbrook has, I wouldn't really call it a student support center, um, students are more identified through the MTSS process, and then, uh, you know, we provide with our student support specialists, Title I funded, um, behavioral supports that way. So it's not as much of a drop-in as, um, Principal Allen talked about, where students can drop in for four or five minutes, um, it's more about identifying them through the MTSS process.
So we have both, sorry, I don't know if you. No, no, you can, yeah. Okay. And I'm guessing from the others watching this would also be something of interest in their buildings as well, and or useful in their spaces? Yeah, I'm seeing nodding heads, okay. So maybe we can, um, to support what Jamie was saying, kind of come up with what some costs specifically might be related to those supports, if there are other supports that might work better in different buildings, what that could look like, um, so that we have some.
And, and it's more, I agree, I think this is an awesome budget, I mean, the fact of where, where we are already, obviously, there's some really massive variables that are still work, to be worked out. I'm just saying, challenge, we're spending forty-four million dollars, are we spending it exactly the way you want? 'Cause I, I think a lot of people would support that, it's just a matter of, we can't do those without adjusting something else, I don't know, I don't know. So, I, you know, I just look at those, and those are very interesting topics, so, take a look at them and see if we need to adjust, 'cause I'd be willing to adjust if we, if you thought we should. If not, your budget's off, I mean, budget's pretty not good, and I liked it, it was only twenty-three slides.
Twenty-three, that's an all-time low for me.
Only, if only about nine more times we gotta listen to it, sorry, I have to throw it in.
Mr. Mazza, would you be able to tell us, uh, based on interest, and you said you've had families reaching out related to full-day preschool, do you, using that interest as kind of a barometer, would your guesstimate be sort of a one section would be the most logical, or do you think it would be more sections?
Might have to defer to Ms. Paris Crowe on this, as she kinda handles, oversees the preschool program, it, I think, and I don't wanna speak for her, but it sounds like we'd like to at least start with one, I also think we're very challenged with space at the current location, so.
Yeah.
Um, there's not only the financial commitment, if we are, if we were to go down this, this path and add one full-day section, and we are in a position of needing to add another half-day, the current location would be, uh.
Very challenging.
Yes, very challenging to identify a space that could accommodate a half-day section, but I'll let Nicole address your question about interest.
Yeah, so we have, um, been getting a lot of interest from families of about the one-day, uh, sorry, the full-day preschool, and so I think for this twenty-five, twenty-six school year, trying it with one section, and hopefully, maybe not, having to add an additional half-day section is a good place to start, sort of gauge and gather some data on, um, enrollment, on increased interest, and our projected preschool enrollment numbers. I think it's a good place to start, I, I think that we'll be headed in to, over the next years, um, adding more sections, full-day sections. I think that that is probably what will end up happening, happening based on, um, families, based on, um, the interest, and based on the enrollment, preschool enrollment's going to be increasing, increase over the next couple, few years.
And with that one step forward, if we were to move that way in twenty-five, twenty-six, the spacing is, is good for that step?
It's good for that step, but like Mr. Mazza said, and I'm sure Mr. Matias can attest, it gets challenging after that, the space is pretty, is pretty limited.
Okay. All right.
So that's something we're gonna have to be mindful of moving forward as we continue to grow.
Okay, and while we're, while we have you here.
Oh, sure.
Um, the bottom, um, bullet point about in-district special education programming, are there any spaces, um, that you see based on sort of current needs that might be, do you see a space for more special education programming in district, anything that jumps out as sort of, this would be a great?
Yeah, like a specific programming?
Specific programming that might be particularly beneficial for our students that we don't currently have?
Yeah, so, um, life skills programming at our middle school level. We're always mindful of any potential social, emotional, or more therapeutic in-district programming, um, you know, just being mindful of the, the type of mental health support students need, students that have been determined eligible already for special education, so that is always a possibility, more therapeutic type of programming, or behavioral programming, but certainly, um, on the near future horizon, is a life skills program.
All right.
Middle school level.
Wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome.
For which space is being planned at the?
Yes.
At the new middle school?
The physical, yes, we have some wonderful programming spaces, uh, in the new middle school, it's really exciting.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions, feedback, anyone at home who's looking to ask anything? All right, this is our first run, and as Jamie mentioned, we'll see this about nine more times in the next several weeks, so also feel free to reach out with questions and or feedback, thank you very much to our admin team for joining us this evening. Principal Landers will hang on to you for a little bit longer, so that we can dive into our next agenda item, which is the Long Meadow High School Program of Studies. Come on up.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here tonight to propose two changes, two updates to the LHS Program of Studies, our Educational Opportunities booklet, um, one is a new class, and one is a prerequisite adjustment. So I'll start with a new class, um, we are proposing another half-year communications class, it would be, it would be titled Communications Two, but we ran communications, um, for the first time in the fall of twenty-four, it's popular, um, we had students who expressed interest in continuing that, um, we have some other courses that we brought you last year that are also running for the first time this year, um, so we are excited, it would allow for more, um, hands-on experiential learning, it would allow for us, those students to continue to work with LCTV, we could theoretically on sign-ups, the class could run by itself, or it could run in conjunction, you know, Communications One and Communications Two, students could theoretically be in the same class, um, at the same time, working on more advanced projects, uh, and playing more, uh, in-depth roles, taking on leadership roles, et cetera, but it's, it's a course we're excited about, I think it makes sense, the last few years, we've had a commitment to making, creating more, uh, experiential learning, kinda culminating experiences, learning by doing, and it fits into that, um, into that effort that we've tried. So that's the course we're asking for you to consider, and the second is, um, uh, the Science Department has been thinking about this for a couple of years, and they came forward with it, debated it, we talked about this at Department Chair Council, DCC, um, and it is a proposal and ask to consider how a student does in biology in ninth grade in addition to how they do in Algebra One. The, the nuance is, in Chemistry Honors, um, right now, we consider their Algebra One grade, for about ninety percent of the students who are asking to take Chemistry Honors, they've taken the Algebra One class in eighth grade. So you're, uh, the biology teacher's making a recommendation only on math, and they're not even considering anything they did in their biology class that year. It, the thought is that it's gonna give a wider context, more information, more data, we don't think that this will change, uh, access to that class, I've sat down with Mr. Rosemond, the, um, Department Chair for School Counseling, we've crunched some numbers for the last few years, but the thought is that it's, it's a wider, you know, uh, data set, and you can take into consideration the students' work habits, um, and skillsets that set them up for success for sophomore year, which they would take Chemistry Honors.
All right, open that for questions and or discussion. Could you just reiterate for this?
I think it's a good idea.
Oh, thank you, Adam, sorry, didn't see you there. Can you reiterate just for the sake of making sure that we're all aware of sort of the process here?
Sure.
The recommendation that a teacher makes goes into Power School, that is what students can sign up for themselves during signup process.
Correct.
If they choose to sign up for something they're not recommended for, so say a student is not recommended for Chemistry Honors, but they would like to take Chemistry Honors anyway, there's a form that they get from Guidance.
Yep.
They take home, get a parent to sign off on.
Yep.
And then they can still opt in?
There are, there are actually two, they could go to the Department Chair, have a conversation, the Department Chair can simply say yes, and then any student can waive in, have about a hundred waivers a year, which is pretty significant, about eleven percent of the, of the overall, um, sign-ups, so they can waive in, it's not the, it's not closed if they're not recommended, but we recommend to try to set students up for success and based on things, and based on what teachers know is kind of the pacing of the class, et cetera.
Yeah, which makes sense. I ask because I'm partly a fan of the question not always being, can I take this, but will I take this? Am I, am I ready to say, like, I wanna tackle a new challenge in this topic I'm interested in, but it sounds like there are plenty of spaces to allow that to happen if a student.
At the end of the day, we believe in allowing the student and the parent to make the final choice, absolutely agree.
Perfect. I'm really excited to hear about the Communications Two class, I'm guessing that will be well-enrolled, it sounds like it was a big hit.
Yeah, we, we would, obviously, we would, so many of our students who took it, not all, but so many of our students who took it this year are seniors, so they won't do this, but this could run, um, we would hopefully, if this is successful tonight, we would plan this for, um, we would, we would advertise this, and sign-ups would be kinda semester two, so students who enjoyed it semester one could go into it if they wanted to stay. And there are other options, we got the capstone running for the first time this year, it's running right now, we have a pretty robust internship program, it's in its, uh, third year, third, fourth year, but third year of, of kind of, uh, on a larger scale, so trying to create more opportunities.
Yeah. Just take a moment to say that I have loved watching that grow over the last several years, um, I really think the high school has done an incredibly impressive job, um, at expanding offerings out into more real-world, experiential, project-based, um, opportunities for students, so just to your whole staff, a big applause for that.
Thank you. Yeah, it's important, it's, we're, we're, synthesis of learning is important, learning by doing, and, um, we've created a lot of opportunities, we've rebooted some existing opportunities, and, and we're gonna do, bring you more in the years to come.
Questions or comments from anyone else at home?
Just as someone who's, I'm taking the senior capstone right now, and I'm really enjoying it so far, and I couldn't recommend more, us increasing these experient, experimental learning cour, courses, just because I think we hear a lot about, out in the public, um, as well as from graduates, that some students feel like they're being thrown in either to a specific major in college, or a job after high school, and I think it's really critical for us to help make sure that we're helping students find what they want. And I think it's really critical for us to help make sure that we're helping students find what they want to do, what they're interested in, and exploring it deeper in high school and giving more of a space for that. So yeah, I just couldn't recommend more what we're doing here.
Well said, Adam.
Kudos to Ms. Gross, who taught both communications and is teaching the Capstone. So she's championing both. It's been, it's been, kudos to her.
Yeah, she's awesome. She's really excited to dive deeper into these topics with us.
That's wonderful. Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Yep. No?
Recommendation?
Welcome a motion.
So I move on the recommendation of the superintendent. The school committee approved the 2025-2026 Long Meadow High School Program of Studies as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Thank you. I think that was Adam, right? Yes, okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Jamie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Estelle?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Have a lovely rest of the evening.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Moving into reports, I do not have any report tonight, other than to say quick reminders, but we'll see everybody again for budget stuff next week. Any other school committee announcements and recognitions? Seeing none, superintendent's report. Anything else on your end?
Couple of quick things. We had a day, a half-day of professional development on January 17th. Dr. Nelson planned district-wide vertical planning for teachers in grades pre-K through eight. It was a great opportunity for educators to connect with the educators that they're, that they're sending students to in the higher grades. So thank you to Dr. Nelson for planning that out. Two new employees that sort of work at a community level or at least a district level that I want to mention to the committee. We have identified a new coordinator for the CLOSE, the Community Prevention Coalition. Ananda Lennox will be joining us on February 10th. She is in that role over in West Springfield and we're excited to have her sustain the great prevention work that goes on here in Long Meadow. She'll work closely with Shelley Warren, our Substance Use Response Coordinator here at the high school. So we'll welcome her on February 10th. And then we, as you know, we're in the process of hiring another, a new Director of Technology for Long Meadow Public Schools in the town. And so we've identified a familiar face, Nick George, formerly worked with us here in Long Meadow. And he's going to return as our Director of Technology beginning February 17th, I think. Eighteenth?
One day's a holiday.
All right, eighteenth. So we're looking forward to welcoming Ananda and Nick.
All right.
All right, that's it.
Thank you. Student representative report.
Great, thank you. So just a reminder to start, to seniors and senior parents, to please turn in your senior dues from now until Friday. You can do this before school, in front of the library. And then if you already turned yours in, I believe it was back in May, then you don't have to worry about this. And they've also had this going for a few days, so if you've turned yours. And then that's all good. And then I really forgot to put the price, so more information on that is available either in the class Google Classroom or the Class of 2025 Instagram. And then last Friday, a few of us from Student Council traveled to Murdoch High School to participate in the MASC Unified Bachi Tournament. We participated, yeah, it was really awesome, with three teams. I felt like this was a really good way for us to grow our Student Council community and it was just a really fun night with pizza. And we, each team participated in three rounds. There was a really fun opening and closing ceremony. And yeah, it was just a really fun Friday night for all of us. And then next Friday, February 7th, students will attend the MASC Roundtable in Northampton at the Bluebonnet Diner, where we'll have a chance to sort of hear different perspectives from all around the region on how to better run our student councils and just sort of hear different ideas on fundraisers, et cetera. And then just a good luck to all of our athletes, has Western Mass Tournament to begin.
All right, great, thank you. Other reports, LPBC, Zach?
No report.
Thank you.
Did have a question. It's not a time for questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry, what was that?
Yes, absolutely. Is it a question for student rep or for Zach?
No, on LBP.
LPBC, yep.
Yeah. I got an email from them about authorizing payments. Is that something we do?
It might be. It depends on what it is. Can you send it to Dr. O'Shea and myself, maybe? CC is in, we'll.
Sure.
Peek at it.
We'll, we'll support.
Yeah, just before I sign anything, I figured it would be.
We'll support you with that, Zach or Adam. Whenever, feel free to reach out or forward us whatever communication you got.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Energy and Sustainability, Estelle?
None.
All right, SEAL, Michaela?
The next SEAL meeting is on February 12th at 7:00 PM. And it's in collaboration with the Federation of Children with Special Needs about bullying. And that is, you can log in, register on Zoom.
All right, wonderful, thank you. Subcommittee reports, Finance Subcommittee. Which of you would like to tackle this one?
Sure, I'll start. Finance submet on Friday, January 24th. And there are a couple of items on your agenda for consideration tonight. There are a few items also that were discussed but are not requiring action in the school committee. One is discussion of athletic program, both follow-up from the previous finance sub in regards to the FY24 program, financial operations and looking at some data, especially related to transportation. The committee, the Subcommittee also discussed the emails that were received regarding the fees related to the JV hockey program and asked for some additional information to be brought back for additional conversation. And then also, we discussed a survey that went out to booster programs, looking for some information about the support they provide to high school athletics. So those items were discussed, no action for school committee tonight. The two items that are on your agenda, the first is related to building use requests. So there are four requests that are part of a consent agenda and I will quickly run through them. The first is from the Long Meadow High School Boys Basketball Booster Club for an end-of-year award ceremony, looking for use of the high school cafeteria on Wednesday, March 5th, from 5:30 to 9:00 PM. The second request is from the Long Meadow Parks and Rec Department for a co-ed basketball clinic on Friday, February 21st, requesting use of the high school gym from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. The third request is from the Long Meadow Music Italy Tour, looking for approval to use the high school parking lot for the drop-off and pickup of students traveling abroad. Drop-off on Friday, February 14th and pickup on Saturday, February 22nd. And the fourth item is from the Wolfswamp PTO for the Valentine's Bingo Event at Wolfswamp Elementary School in the gym on Friday, February 7th, from 4:00 PM to 30:00 PM. And just want to acknowledge Long Meadow Youth Basketball of revising their building use for this event to use that space since they had already had it permitted. So they accommodated this request. So those are the four building use requests presented tonight that Finance Sub reviewed and recommended.
All right, perfect. Do we have a possible motion related to those?
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee approve the consent agenda for the January 28th, 2025 school committee as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Michaela. A quick reminder that there is no discussion of items on a consent agenda. So if a committee member would like to remove one or more of these items on the agenda for further discussion, we will vote to remove that. Is there anyone who would like to request one of these be removed from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, we will move to a vote on the entire consent agenda. Jamie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Estelle?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. We have one more possible motion?
Yes. Our second item in, on your agenda is consideration for approval of the FY25 Grants in Special Revenues Revision Number One. Just for members of the Finance Sub, this is an updated version from the copy that was in our Finance Subcommittee discussion. So this is recognizing revisions to the grants in special revenues. The current budget amount was the amount that was adopted when the FY25 budget was developed, so about a year ago, not really knowing exactly what the award amounts would be. The, this revision will now update our budget to reflect the actual award amount. And I will just quickly highlight the fund amount. So the IDA grant would be reduced by $5,829.98. Title II grant would be reduced by $10,048. The Special Literally Childhood Grant would be increased by $662. Title I would be reduced, would be increased by $7,218. And the Title I grant again has an additional, sorry, Title IV was being increased by $7,218. Title I is being increased by $5,655. And the Medco grant has an increase of $38,297, a total increase of $35,954.02, which would be in addition to the overall FY25 budget.
All right, thank you. Any questions and/or possible motions related to this?
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee approve the FY25 Grants in Special Revenues revisions dated 1/24/2025 as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Let's second that.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Jamie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Estelle?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. That brings us to other subcommittees. No reports at the time. Ongoing business, middle school building project?
Briefly, schematic design is still underway. We had a meeting with the design team, our leadership team had a meeting with the design team on Wednesday. So we continue to provide feedback to the design team to get them to a place where they can complete that schematic design by the spring. And additionally, we have begun to meet with some advisory groups. We've met recently with some folks from youth sports in Long Meadow to get some feedback on the outdoor athletic fields associated with the middle school. So we're off and running still.
All right, fantastic. Seeing other, no other business, we have one final possible recommended motion.
Yep. I move that the school committee meet in executive session, persuading to mass general law, Section 30A, S21A, Purpose Two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units A, B, C, D, E, F, and H. And Purpose Seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes, meeting minutes, not to reconvene into open session.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Jamie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Estelle?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. We are officially adjourned. We will see everyone next week. Have a good night.